I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 6, 2021 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We have quite a list on the agenda, but they're not long. Okay, we will have public service announcements, moment of silence, department reports from the town administrator, several action items, consideration and action on a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Brew Company, consideration and action on a Hawker and Pedler license for Michael Sutherland of Sunrun, consideration and possible action for auctioneer's license for the Sturbridge Federated Church on behalf of Robert H. Glass Associates, consideration and possible action on a change of manager for Apple New England LLC on their liquor license, consideration and possible action on a change of manager for Ocean State Job Lot on their liquor license, consideration and action on an engineering design contract for the Fisk Hill Sewer Pump Station in Forest Main, consideration and possible action on bids for paving and materials for the DPW, consideration and action on the Chapter 90 funds for the annual paving program, consideration and action on the acceptance of resignation of Tyler Gustafson from the Department of Public Works, consideration and possible action on an easement for National Grid at 65 Whittamore Road, consideration and possible action on increasing the stipend for the farmers market manager from $1,500 to $2,000, consideration and action on the acceptance and authorization for use of a donation to the Sturbridge Senior Center, consideration and action on appointments to boards and committees, consideration and possible action on the resignation of Tammy Warner as part-time dispatcher, consideration and possible action on an amendment to a contract for participation for public information meetings on the Senior Center study project, old business, under that we have COVID-19 update, Keno Monitor at Fred's Variety, warehouse projects in the town of Charlton, review of the request for proposal for reuse of Ait Brookfield Road, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes of June 21, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Public service announcements, Jamie, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Mary?
I just wanted to say, I know it already happened, but I hope everyone had a happy and healthy Fourth of July, and I also just want to give a shout out to OSV. Every Fourth of July, they have a naturalization, new citizenship ceremony, and I had an opportunity, I didn't go this year, but I've gone a number of times, and it's quite moving, 30 new citizens from 13 different countries, and it's held right at Old Sturbridge Village. So if you ever have an opportunity, I think it was on Friday, they always do it Fourth of July weekend, and it's really a moving ceremony, a lot of emotion, a lot of excitement about becoming a U.S. citizen, so.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Chase?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, and I have none. Now, could we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID? Okay, thank you. Okay, first on the action items, then, we have a consideration and possible action on a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Brew Company. Is anyone here representing them?
I am.
Okay, could you please come forward? Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Paul Wengender. I'm the president and owner of Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company.
Okay, now that's out of Worcester?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you're requesting a special one-day license for all the concerts?
Yeah, the remaining concerts, including this Thursday, which I think there are seven.
I forget exactly any how many more?
Definitely. And then we put in also application, we put the 26th in as well for a ready date because we just about always use it.
Okay, questions from the board? We had a request two years ago, not from your company, but from another company, and I had expressed my lack of enthusiasm for it. I really don't think liquor on the common at a nice concert is apropos. We don't have any prohibitions against people bringing their own liquor to the common, plus I do know there's been complaints, not about the liquor served or anything, but about the kids running around and causing a little mischief. So I, for one, really am not in favor of this request. Any other comments? Chase?
I'll speak for it. I think that it's a controlled area. I think that people will behave themselves. We did approve the license two years ago, although it's a much different board now, and we didn't have any problems, so I'm in favor of.
Yeah, it was approved on a three to two vote.
Yeah.
Have you read the recommendations from the police chief? If it is granted?
I haven't.
Do you want me to read them? Do you want me to read them?
Please.
Greater Good will pay for an additional officer at the current detail rate set by the Sturbridge Police Association, CBA. Bracelets will be given to those patrons of Greater Good who have been identified to be 21 years of age or over. Employees must be TIP certified. That's from the chief.
Okay, any other comments? Mary?
Well, I mean, I, for years, have been abstaining. I used to vote against it because I'm also not in favor of liquor on the common, but so I'm going to just continue with my practice and just abstain for the people who want it. But I just, you know, I feel like it does open up some liability even for the town, so I will abstain from the vote because it's not personal. Really like your brewing company, and my family does as well, but I just, I just can't.
We've done probably 200 events without incident.
Right, I know. I know I'm in the minority on my views, but.
And we bring people from the town who are used to dealing with anyone under the influence to run these types of events.
Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion in one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to approve the special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Brewing Company.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? And abstention, so that does pass, then?
It passes.
Well, two to.
Okay.
Yeah, because an abstention is like not a vote.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Alex will take it.
Don't be intimidated by her.
Okay, next, we have consideration and action on a Hawker and Pedler license for Michael Sutherland of Sunrun. Now, this is the one we held because there was really, could you come down, please?
Yeah, this one of you invited up.
Now, we had a question the last time because there really wasn't any explanation on exactly what you were doing, but I take it by having your car in here, you're going to be going house to house in residential areas?
It is, it is. Basically, the way my business model works with the company anyways is I typically don't do door knocking, it's not my thing. I own another business also where I serve about 15, 20 families a week, so I'll be able to do business that way. The only reason why I apply for this with any of the towns that I do business in is so that if I want to have installs in a specific neighborhood, all I do is just go to those maybe dozen houses in that direct neighborhood that have inside of like their neighborhood getting the product, and that way they're operated as well. But it wouldn't be something where you'd see me on the roads five days a week, just to be clear.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just have a question.
Mary?
Do you go door to door to people who have asked you to go? I don't know if this is, or are you, are you going, kind of, for lack of a better term, unannounced?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's the only time I would, I would do the door knock is when, you know, if there's, but just give me an example, there's an install, it could be happening, I'm two weeks up on this hill, and what I'll do is run into town to that install. I'll just go door to door, introduce myself, ask them if they're aware, you know, their neighborhood getting, you know, the solar options, and then offer them the same, you know, services.
And what, and what hours do you plan on going?
It wouldn't be between 10:00 in the morning at the very earliest, maybe till about 6:00. I've never, I've never door knocked after 6:00, so.
Yeah, it's seasonal too, right? June through December.
Yeah, between you and I, if I don't have, I'll only door knock in Sturbridge when I have installs in a specific neighborhood in Sturbridge. I don't have any desire to come over, besides the immediate neighbors, just to be clear.
Okay.
I mean, normally, I wouldn't ask all these questions, but just given the nature, well, given the nature of we're just coming off of the pandemic, a lot of children still aren't vaccinated.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I will support it with the condition of that we state the hours in the approval and also that you wear a mask when you go door to door.
Sure.
Okay, any other comments?
No, I think those are good additions.
Yeah, someone want to make that motion then, Mary?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Hawker and Pedler license request for Michael Sutherland of Sunrun as presented at our selectman meetings with the conditions that he limits his door to door from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and wears a mask at all times.
Sure.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I will second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Good luck.
Is there anything else I need to do here?
Nope.
I've got the check on my review.
Ready, you're paid.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, we have consideration and action for auctioneer's license for the Sturbridge Federated Church on behalf of Robert Glass. Anyone here for that? I mean, we've been doing this for several years. Does the board have any question? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Sturbridge Federated Church auctioneer's license to occur on Saturday, August 14, 2021, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have consideration and action on a change of manager for Apple New England LLC on their liquor license. Sir, would you like to come up and give us the highlight, please?
Chris Cyanetti, general manager, please.
Okay, and we have corporate vote and everything filled out correctly? Okay, does, as far as your tips, your Safe Serve alcohol certificate?
Yep.
You have it, but it expires this December?
Yes. Yeah, I'll go over again to Sean.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion in the change of manager for Applebee's New England LLC on their liquor license through Chris Cyanetti.
As a Kabinsky says. Okay, is there a second to that?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Have a good night.
Like.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, consideration and action on an engineering design contract for the.
You gotta go E.
I already checked it off, so we can't.
More.
Okay. Consideration and possible action on a change of manager for Ocean State Job Lot on their liquor license. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name, please?
Keith Callahan.
Okay, you're going to be the new manager, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Yes, I will move to change the manager amendment, or excuse me, I will change of manager amendment, liquor license application of, I have to find your full name.
Yeah.
Keith Callahan. Keith Callahan. I beat you to it, Mary. For the Ocean State Jobs.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, you too. Stay dry.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, now, we have consideration and action on an engineering design contract for the Fisk Hill Sewer Pump Station in Forest Main. Jeff, do you want to go over that, or does Butch?
I'll start, and if there's details, Butch can jump in. As we've discussed, we have a section of the town serviced by Southbridge in their sewer. It makes sense, it's gravity-fed, and at the time that line was constructed, our existing wastewater plant, or the plant at the time didn't have the capacity to handle that volume of waste. Since the board has since upgraded the plant, we have the capacity, and with reviewing some numbers, it may make sense for us to now capture that flow back to our wastewater plant. We have the capacity, and the plant could certainly use the flow. In addition, there's some other aspects of our contract with Southbridge, as the volume of wastewater in that area increases, so does our payments to Southbridge. So we would like to build a new pump station in Forest Main to capture that flow and send it back to our plant. This contract that's before you this evening from Ty &amp; Bond designs the pump station, designs the Forest Main, and also evaluates the Hobbsburg Pump Station, I think Hobbsburg?
Yes.
To make sure its capacity is sufficient for the additional flow.
Okay, and it's below what the town meeting approval?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I think it's an excellent idea because right now, we pay $200,000 a year, just doing it for the people watching, and this is going to cost $176 to build it, but that's kind of a one.
Not to build, to design.
No, this is designed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's it. Wouldn't that be nice?
We'll do it tomorrow.
To design it.
Do it twice.
But it's not going to cost us $200,000 every year. Is it going to be less?
Well, instead of paying Southbridge, we can pay off whatever loans we take to construct it.
Right, but I'm just wondering, will it also be a net savings or not?
Long, long term, we're going to have more revenue into the system. The real magic is going to be what's the debt service on the construction of the infrastructure? And I think we looked at the $200,000 a year over 20 years, basic debt service, so somewhere between four or five million for the total improvements, but then there's also with that additional project that's going to be built, that's additional flow, that's additional dollars we can capture too, so it allows us to go a little higher on the total project cost. So we really won't know what the payoff is until we get the numbers on the cost of construction. But long term, once that debt's paid off.
Right.
It'll be an enhancement to the, to the system.
I have just a quick question. Jeff, is there a fairly standard time period for these type of loans, or is it just varied depending on whatever credit you're getting?
20 years is generally the loan amount. You can go longer, you can go shorter. We'd have to look at what the total dollar value is. On the mechanical side, you probably don't want to go longer than 20. It's a period of probable usefulness, but you just have to take a look at it and deal with, you know, bond counsel and the engineers when we get there.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Someone willing to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering agreement with Ty &amp; Bond for the Main Street Pump Station in Forest Main.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
It's four.
Four. I keep saying five. Well, I can see Alex down there.
Yeah, Alex, stop voting.
Don't put your hand up. Okay, next, consideration and action on bids for paving and materials for the DPW. Butch?
Yes, we put out all of our goods and services to bid this year again, as we usually do, and we got some good prices. Just, I gave you a list of what, what we got for bids this year, and I also gave you last year, so you can do some comparisons. Paving is a little higher, which I kind of assumed it would be, but it's only 50 cents a ton, so it's really, actually, no, it's a couple, less than $2 a ton more, so it's not too bad. Everything else was, was good, it was good bids, so we just want approval so we can go ahead with our paving program.
Sidewalks are up.
Yeah, but we don't have to go with those. We can, we can solicit lower prices. Some of these prices are, some of these bidders bid prices hoping to get all the work, and if they don't get all the work, they pull out, so I kind of suspect they'll, they'll pull out. They don't really want the sidewalks, they wanted the paving.
Right.
So.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will. I move to approve the agenda item as written for goods and services for the bids and services of the Department of Public Works for the FY 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Another four to one. Oh, Mary?
Butch, I just want to thank you for sending the list to the state.
They were out there today.
Of all the pot, who really got them all.
Yeah, well, they, they haven't got them all yet, but they were out, they were out last week a little bit, and then today, whoever was there out there today did a good job. He was, actually compacted the holes.
Because with the rain.
Yeah, well, between here and the plaza on 131, you'll see the, and he did a good job, so.
You must have sent somebody out, because I had a number in my mind, but then you had a lot more.
No, I went out myself and just.
Oh, yeah, it was very detailed.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
And I sent it to Jamie because he's, he's like our regional manager, and although, not that Jamie.
Yeah, I know, I'm very, very concerned about the potholes on Route 20.
Jamie will be.
Or water, you know.
No, the state Jamie, but he responded, so that's good.
Nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we already made the motion and voted.
Yep.
Okay, consideration and action on acceptance of the resignation of Tyler Gustafson from the Department of Public Works.
After that, can we go back to H?
I got to stop doing this. Can you tell them in a hurry?
Actually, G.
We did G.
Oh, you did G?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did G.
We just voted on that.
Yeah, H.
It's around I.
The use of Chapter 90 funds for the annual paving project. So you're requesting $700,000?
Yes, a little aggressive, but this, this will clean up everything from the last CMR PC, CMRCP, PC, whatever.
I know.
That, the paving plan they gave us. So now, from now, we're, now we're kind of going back and redoing some of the ones that were done 10 years ago. So after, after this year, everything that was listed as being bad will be done. So then we'll hit like, I can see some, like Cedar Street started to get bad, so, and some of the larger main routes, but this will pretty much clean us up, so every street will have, I think will have been hit within the last eight or 10 years.
Right, and we'll still have 3.4 million left of Chapter 90?
Yes, yes, and we're getting, we got 427 this year, so we'll probably get another. So next year's paving program probably won't be so aggressive.
Yeah, good. I just noticed, though, on page 60, you have Blueberry Lane listed twice. Must just be.
Well, they have to, that road is, it's like a roller coaster. I don't know if we've been up there lately, but it's, it's all over the place. So we have to pulverize that, so it's on twice because I have to put a base coat, after we pulverize, we put a base coat.
And then go back.
And then we pave the top, so I listed it twice so I could get all the asphalt listed, so it's really just once.
I'm just curious, do you get a lot of complaints from residents about the condition of the road?
Yeah, not a lot, I mean, not a lot, but.
Private roads?
Yes, private roads, a lot, but not really, I mean, here and there, but I drove, if you drive Blueberry Lane, you'll see what I mean, it's, it's amazing that nobody's called from Blueberry Lane, but it needs it badly, so.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Chapter 90 funds for the summer 2021 paving program.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Four to one. Okay, next, the resignation of Tyler Gustafson from the Department of Public Works. Okay, any questions or comments?
Tyler took a job with the DOT, so.
That's good.
Did you fix some potholes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds.
Maybe we'll be seeing them shortly.
There's just silver lining there.
Get your little in, Butch?
A little karma.
Somebody want to make a motion then, accepting?
I will make a motion accepting the resignation of Tyler Gustafson from the Department of Public Works effective July 3, 2021, and thanking him for his service.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next, we have consideration and action on an easement for National Grid at 65 Whittamore Road.
Yes, this was approved at town meeting. This goes back to the construction of the new water pump station on Whittamore. National Grid needed a pole locate on our property. They requested it through an easement, and we gave them a license until the town meeting approved the easement. Now, the board formally has to approve the easement, so that's what we're asking.
Questions, comments from the board?
A quick question, Jeff. Who drafted this?
National Grid, and it was reviewed by town council.
Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the easement for National Grid for 65 Whittamore Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Four to one. Okay, consideration and possible action on increasing the stipend for the farmer's market. Take care, Butch. Manager from 1,500 to 2,000. Okay, the farmer's market volunteers and special events committees recommending the increase. Okay, any questions from the board?
Are our funds available to make the increase?
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to increase the stipend for the farmer's market manager from 1,500 per season to 2,000, beginning with the 2021 farmer's market.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four to one. Okay, consideration and possible action on the acceptance and authorization for use of a donation to the Sturbridge Senior Center, and the donation comes from a local Dunkin' Donuts. Didn't really say which one, because most of them are independently run, but.
I can get the address.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need it for a thank you, but it's a very generous donation, $3,000. Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, how many Dunkins? We have four now, correct?
Yeah.
One 31, 20, five 50, and then the one by, that's all by Walmart.
And there's one.
Down at Apple Green, down 15.
Oh, that's what I meant, when I said pile, that's what I meant, so that's four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't get right, we don't know which one.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make the motion to accept the donation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay.
And Jeff, you're going to send a thank you on our behalf?
Absolutely.
Okay, next, we have consideration and action on appointments to boards and committees. These are a few that came in for the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Russ Chamberlain, which expires in 2024, Wally Hershey, he is currently on the Sturbridge Housing Partnership, Council on Aging. Now, we did confirm these at the last meeting, but the town clerk has worked out a schedule of the terms to disperse the expiration dates, so we are asked to reconfirm with the new dates of expiration. Annette Roberts to expire in 2023, Ken Benson, 2022, Ken White, 2024, Mary Lawless, 2023, Rebecca Mimo, 2023, Margaret Dowling, 2024, Sue Grandone, 2024, Ian White, 2022, Barbara Giannfredo, 2022, and then for the Sturbridge Cultural Council, Kerry Carey, Jim Douglas, and Antonio Squire. and Antonio Squire.
I think Mr. Douglas is here. Antonio is here, and Wally Hershey for the planning board's here as well.
Okay, thank you for volunteering your time. And Wally knows quite a bit of Sturbridge history, too. Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
The Council on Aging, that's full, right? There's no openings on that?
That, I believe so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They were very active in recruiting new members. As Kerry's doing a great job on the cultural council, too, I'll have another one for the next meeting.
Okay.
Do we have any openings on any boards that haven't been, like, we haven't got applicants for them?
We do have a vacancy on conservation.
Okay, yeah.
Um, due to the retirement of Steve Halteman.
Just might be nice if we announce that.
Well, I was gonna ask that, because what we usually do is, after the general appointments made this time of year, we usually list on the town's website any openings.
Yeah, Alex has been working with the town clerk on that.
Yeah, and hopefully.
Hopefully get some momentum going, yeah.
And if you can do it, so you don't have to open up, you don't have to open up that board to see that there's a vacancy, you know what I mean?
Oh, just list it.
Yeah, because people almost have to be interested in order to click on the board, whereas if it's just, as soon as you open it, under current news or something.
Yeah, right, because you may not even know what board it is.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I think Phil was updating on our onboard system, so like, go to the Boards and Committees tab on the website, and like, it shows the list of all of the meetings, and then it says, like, expire, or vacant, and that, so I know it's updating that.
Yeah, but if we could get all the vacancies all in one succinct.
We'll, we'll make a list.
Yeah.
You know, like, vacancies, exclamation mark.
Come join. Okay, okay, then, is there a motion then to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you for your volunteerism. Okay, next.
Wait, the, we'll reach out to you both for, what's next? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Yeah, first, yeah, first thing is, you have to see the town clerk to get sworn in, and then Jeff will let you know when the meetings and next steps, okay?
They're probably, oh, no, they're not gonna be there anymore, I was gonna say.
Thanks, you too. Okay, consideration and possible action on the resignation of Tammy Warner as a part-time dispatcher. Any questions from the board? I guess she is finding the time constraints not very manageable.
I will move to accept the resignation of Tammy Warner as part-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department, effective June 28, 2021. That might have been a little early. Been thanking her for her working hard for us.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, consideration and possible action on an amendment to a contract for participation for public information meetings on the Senior Center Study Project. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. We want to begin to educate the public on the results of the Senior Center Study Project, and we would like the architect and the engineer available to answer questions and make presentations. I also know that the Board of Selectmen want to hold a public hearing on this particular project, so I'd like to have them available as well for the board to present again and to ask any questions regarding those, that project. So it's $500 per meeting. We have two set up at the Senior Center for the upcoming week, but I'm sure there'll be more as we progress, and then the public hearing with the Board of Selectmen, so.
Okay, comments, questions from the board?
So this isn't necessarily the, so July 9th and July 15th, there might be additional?
There will be.
Will be.
Yeah, we just want to get started.
Gotcha, no, that makes sense, that was my question.
One of them's during the day, it's easier for seniors to get out during the day to see the project.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the additional funds for the consultants for the Senior Center feasibility project for participation in the public information forums.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I just have one question, I mean, I think it's probably obvious, but they're gonna present the feasibility for all the three locations that they did.
The entire package, what they looked at.
One big study.
Okay.
Yeah.
Three hats to it. Okay, next, old business, COVID update, Jeff?
Uh, yes, two things on the COVID update. The state has opened their VaxMillions contest, so those that have been vaccinated can go online and register to win, I guess, a million dollars, is that what it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
A week, a week, there's quite a few of them.
A week? Oh, one winner per week?
One winner per week.
All right, woo, all right. So that's, we've posted that on our social media pages. Also, we've received the first allocation of the ARPA funds, but it's $500,000. We don't know when the, and because we're in a non-functioning county, the monies that went to counties across the country are being redistributed to non, in, to towns in non-functioning counties. So the $502,000 we received, where it was half of our direct town allocation, we haven't heard yet what happens to the county money we're supposed to receive. Overall, we're supposed to get $2.8 million, including the county money, but we only got half of the town money so far. So right now, that entire $500,000 is going to revenue replacement for the 2022 budget. So until we get a handle on the rest of the money, we're kind of in a holding pattern with other things.
Like everyone else.
Yeah.
Chase?
So that would make, I don't know, I received an email this afternoon from the Sturbridge, I just wanted to make sure everybody did. So that would make that a little premature, then, because we're still in the very beginning stages of, of getting our 2.8 million.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool.
I think, I think what will happen is, once everything's worked out, when the money will come in, and we have an understanding of revenue replacement, not just for 2022, but 2023, right, because it's a two-year, we're gonna have a two-year bump on this thing. The board, and, you know, we should talk about uses of this, the other funds. And what you got today is an appropriate use, and I'm sure there's other ideas out there, the business community, we may want to do some programs that support the business community as well. So all the ideas are on the table.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Are we go, are we gonna answer that individually? I was gonna send something to him, or as a board, that we will consider it once all our funds are.
Um, which email is that?
This would have been the one about hazard pay.
Oh, I thought you meant it came from private citizens.
No, no, I think we all got it on our email. But I, if we can make it, when the funds do come in, an agenda item to discuss, is that appropriate an executive session, a hazard pay, or open session?
No, no.
Because, I mean, for some of the same reasons that the police association gave, I would think it would also be appropriate to talk about other departments that are in a similar, you know, like our, not like our first responders.
I mean, I'm sure they will, when Jeff in the finance department gets busy working with the numbers.
Well, I think, again, there's probably a basket of things you want to do with the funds we don't use for revenue replacement.
Right.
I think that idea is out there, other towns may be considering the same thing, other towns are considering a host of other options. So we have three-plus years to spend these dollars, um, so I think every idea should be vetted at this point, and there's no, nothing that's been off the table yet.
All right, I have a suggestion, I just want to raise something, I don't know, I was thinking, I don't know if this can be done, but, so the VaxMillions is at the state level, can individual towns have their own incentive program? I mean, now, right now, we're waiting for the rest of the money, but inevitably, there's probably gonna be a booster that we're all gonna have to get, because, don't the studies show that the antibodies go down over time? So I didn't know if, if we had any extra money, if we can do something at the town level where we encourage it and offer maybe scholarship money to our, you know, seniors or whoever is willing to get the vaccine. I don't know that, you know, maybe you could just look into it if any towns do it, because I think, you know, if, if we're one of the towns that have the most vaccinations, that's also good for our economy, I mean, fewer restaurants will close, fewer people will get the.
Do we know what the percentage of our vaccination is?
In town?
In town, yeah, do we know?
I don't know, I don't know if we know the stats, that'd be worth asking the board of, I know Massachusetts as a whole is up compared to other parts of the country, but that would be good to know what percentage, Jamie, of our own residents have been vaccinated, and our youth. So if we, that kind of puts us on the map, too, we'd get some good publicity for it. I mean, we can't give a million, but we could probably give like 5,000 a week for a month, or something like that.
I will check the treasury rules on if that's possible.
All right, thank you.
And add it to the, you know, if we can, we'll add it to the list of uses.
I'm sure we'll find plenty of uses. Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Okay, next, we have the Kino monitor at Fred's Variety.
Mr. Patel is here this evening, if you have any questions on his request to have the monitor.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
My son, Chira Patel, I'm the director and treasurer of Fred's Variety. I'm gonna speak behalf of my father, Jay Patel, and as well as Fred's Variety.
Okay, questions from the board? One selectman last week raised what I consider a very important point, that you already sell the Kino, and, you know, people may be out to buy a beer, or a nip, or something, and open it up in the store and watch the monitor, which would not be allowed. So to go along with that thought, I wouldn't, I'm not going to approve the monitor in my vote, because I think it's too much of a temptation, and I don't think it can always be monitored by somebody working.
Should I ask?
Well, you can answer.
Yeah, so, personally, I own a liquor store as well, and we have a Kino monitor up there. I've been in the liquor industry so, last 14 years, we never had a single incident that people opened a plate of beer, and definitely it's not appropriate anyway, it's retail business only, so. Second thing, uh, to ask for the Kino is because we want to make a complete store, we have a little deli up there, when the people ask to make a sandwich, they have five to seven minutes to hang out in the store. So my suggestion to ask, to both, to have Kinos, customer can spend at least five minutes on Kino, if they choose, other than that.
Yeah, no, if it was, you know, if it was just a deli selling deli things, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but where the alcohol is involved. Okay, any other comments from anybody else? Mary?
I can appreciate our chair's concern, but because you haven't had an incident, I think that if there is a problem, then we can always address it. I mean, if, if the situation is where people are doing what our chair is concerned about, opening up a nip and like, you know, putting some Baileys in their coffee and like, watching the Kino, um, I think that, then, you know, we'll, we'll address it. Is that not what people do? They don't put Baileys, I, I know.
Oh, they do, Mary, they do.
She's very specific.
I know, I don't really, I know, that was a problem, they're like, what is she telling you? Well, I'm trying to picture, like, when you'd open up a nip, like.
Anytime you're down, don't you see them when you're running?
Oh, yeah, no, I see them on the side of the road, for sure. But I mean, I think if it is a problem, then we, you'd have to come back and we'd address it, and maybe we would, you know, pull the Kino monitor at that point, or.
Well, I think that would be more of a liquor license issue, Kino monitor issue, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, Mr. Patel, you said 40 years, 40 years?
14.
14. No, no, that's.
You're too young for 40.
I thought they meant the business. 14 years, what, in a restaurant, or?
Liquor stores.
In a, um, in a wine?
In a store, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I don't know if a motion's necessary, just if you want to.
Well, we write the letter to the state.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to write the letter to the state, one way or the other.
So the motion is to write a letter to the state not opposing it?
Right, to approve the monitor.
To approve it, yeah, I guess that's.
Same difference.
That's one way you can say it. I will move to, um, notify the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we do, we approve the use of Kino at Fred, Fred's Variety.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and one opposed. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, next, we have warehouse projects in the town of Charlton. Okay, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. At the last meeting, the board asked staff to do a couple things. One was to engage outside counsel. We've engaged with Art Krieger of Anderson Krieger to advise the board on any potential legal issues relative to these two, to these two projects, one at 241 Sturbridge Road in Charlton, the other at 53 Sturbridge Road in Charlton. The 53 Sturbridge Road is an Amazon facility, the other one, 241, the user has not been identified formally yet. Also, we engaged a traffic engineer at the board's request. Their comments for each project are included in the packet, or included in the packet of documents that were on the dais this evening. There are two draft letters, one for each site, and these are very rough, and these are just comments. I don't, I think the board should kind of tell me what you're looking for in terms of tone and outcomes, in order to complete those. The comments for the 241 Charlton Road project are due on July 9. The comments for 53 Sturbridge Road are due on the 13th. Two big differences between the projects, the one at 241, they are at the, nearing the end of their MEPA process, and we're commenting on their final traffic study that they've prepared. The 53 Sturbridge Road, the Amazon facility, they're at the beginning of the MEPA process, and this is about the scope of the review for the project. So those are kind of two different things.
Jeff, when, when does the operator have to reveal itself on the 241?
I have no idea.
Is there a, maybe, I just, just ask council, I'm just curious.
Yeah, usually, yeah, usually when they put plans to a planning board. Usually it's known then, unless, sometimes companies.
There is a developer, this may be where the developer is leasing the facility to an, an operator, uh, so the traffic volumes would have to be known.
Right.
Yeah. There's also public hearings before the Charlton Board, Planning Board, for each of the projects. That notice is in, or is in the documents you received this evening as well. They're both on, I think, Wednesday, the 14th. Both of these projects have public hearings before the Charlton Planning Board on Wednesday, the 14th. So I'd be happy to work on any comments or issues. If the board wants to assign a member to work on the comments yourself, that's fine, too, as long as we get them in on time.
Well, there's quite a bit here in both these. I would suggest maybe we read them through and then get any comments back to you ASAP.
Yeah, I think that's.
Instead of trying to hash it out.
Sure. Just a couple takeaways from what we've learned in the past couple weeks. The traffic studies that have been done for each individual facility do not recognize the existence of the other facility when it comes to potential impact. So you can see in the document that we've said, hey, you've got to kind of take into account the other one.
Right.
Also, based upon a MEPA online meeting we had on the 53 Sturbridge Road, a comment was made by a representative out of Charlton that perhaps using the Turnpike Service Area, that basically is in between those two facilities, as access for both, may be an option. So the comments you have in front of you this evening mention that as an option.
Well, that's funny, when I quickly glanced at that, I thought they were hoping for another egress from the Mass Pike.
Well, that's what we're saying, come off.
Yeah, but I mean, a total.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, which is big bucks, but, okay.
I think hopefully MassDOT understands the impacts all along the corridor from these locations to the Pike 84 access point in Sturbridge, and makes them pay for whatever is necessary.
Right.
Mitigate, yeah.
Mitigation, the payment.
Right.
And Gene and you, you know, did a good job listing all the projects in Charlton and Sturbridge, and that they should take into account.
Do we know if the town of Southbridge has taken any formal position on it with comments or anything? I'm not saying you should know, I just didn't know.
Southbridge, I do not know. They weren't on...
They're going to be impacted even more by one of them, because that's closer to Worcester Street, right? I mean, further at the other end.
Yeah, and I think...
They're going to have a traffic impact, too.
From, from that understanding of that, from that meeting, the employees are coming in, not off 20, but on that backside road to the Amazon facility. So they're going to get a lot of traffic that way. One thing that did come up, the Amazon facility is not a last-mile facility, which means you're not going to get the delivery vans in and out. You're going to get the employees, which are heavy, and about 250 trucks a day, tractor trailers, but no vans that are delivering direct to homes or businesses.
Okay.
At least that's the current...
Thought.
Current plan.
Okay, so, you know, read it through thoroughly, and I'm sure some people will have a few other...
Yeah, please, I take no pride in ownership on that.
No, because, I mean, it's going to affect us adversely, no doubt about it. And, you know, the state needs, needs to realize that and do what they can. Okay, review, request for proposal for reuse of 8 Brookfield Road. Looks good.
We've, we've not added dates yet. I think the dates will be put in if the board would like to move forward with seeing what a potential reuse could be. If you want to move forward that, we'll insert some dates that are appropriate per statute and see what we get. We still do get interested parties calling about the use or about the property. Some may want to renovate, which, you know, some may want to renovate, others may want to move on.
I hope they have $435,000.
Well, we do plan, if we do put this out, we'll have an onsite meeting for those that are interested. They'll get a tour of the building and be able to go inside and look and see what's what, to make sure they're aware, and see what we get. Town meeting will have to approve any sale or long-term lease.
Okay, now, these numbers from CME, the structural repairs and everything that needs to be done, that's from this study that they did when? That was, uh?
2015.
15, six years ago, so I'm sure these numbers are only up.
Oh, absolutely, but I think the condition still exists.
Oh, yeah.
So people have to evaluate the condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it's probably too late to put specific dates today if we aim for a fall special town meeting, right?
We don't know, depends on when we want to do the fall special town meeting. If we try to do it early, like end of September, 1st of October, probably. But if we're targeting more towards mid to late October, perhaps. It just depends on the level of review that goes into the response. And I'm, and I'm sure everybody wants this to be as transparent as possible and as much information as possible on a potential reuse. So we'll just have to see.
Okay, how's the board feel?
I have a question first. Is this the type of, is addressing 8 Brookfield Road the type of thing that we could use COVID funds for from the bailout?
To repair it?
Yeah, yeah, to clean it up. And because it's, you know, I don't think everybody agrees. We don't want to lay a bailout.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so, I mean...
I wouldn't think so either, but I...
Yeah, Jamie, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know what the infrastructure pieces of that bill were, so...
Water, sewer, broadband?
Gotcha.
Yeah, everything. Okay, anything else? So did we want to pick dates, or?
Well, I, I'm of the position, I'm not really for the sale of the building. I think it's selling on Route 20 is just, we're going to find ourselves in a situation in 10, 20, whatever many years where we're going to want that piece of property potentially. So I'm, I'm more conservative on it, but I do, so I probably will vote against this, but I do think it absolutely has to be addressed, and I see the logic.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's been sitting there vacant for...
No, I get it.
Just deteriorating, you know? And I know some people have suggested for a senior center, but there's not enough land and...
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, future use is, I just, we're not making new land on Route 20, you know what I mean? And in this present market, I feel that it's, I don't want to say pennyworth pound, because that's not right, but it's, it's just that we're, we're, I don't think we're in a situation where we need to divest of assets or something like this, so I'm just very conservative. However, I do think we need to do something, so I...
Yeah, I mean, Mary?
I was just going to comment, too. I'm more in favor of leasing the property. I mean, for a long time, we had it leased to Mass Motion Dance before they moved across the street. And that way, it leaves the option for us to, you know, not like a 25-year lease, but like a five-year lease, and then if we wanted the property, it's not sold. And also, I, I just don't think there's a real appetite, based upon our other town meeting, for selling that property. A lot of people, at least those that attend town meeting, are very much, had attachment to that building in a way that I didn't realize. So I don't even think if we tried to sell it, that it would really fly at town meeting. So I personally would rather see it leased.
That's why it's out there for lease, or...
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, well, you have to see, because, you know, land on Route 20, I know we've gotten comments about the parking law, you know, put it back on the tax rules. Well, it was a town meeting decision for parking to enhance the shopping and restaurants and everything. Rivezi's building's been for sale for three years now, and there's been no bites on that. It's, it's a tough market right now. But I, I see your point, Jamie, but we have to start somewhere.
I would say this. I, given the dilapidated nature of the building, I don't know that you would get anybody to invest in it to make it habitable if you're only going to do a five-year lease. So it's going to have to be a long-term lease and long meeting, 20-plus. If you really want to save the property, it's probably best to raise the building and leave it vacant and just use it for area parking for now. That way, it takes a building that's an attractive nuisance. We eliminate the liability, and you create a parking area which you can save for something else down the road.
Yeah, we'd have the land still. Okay, so we will...
But it's worth putting it out there and seeing what comes in.
Okay.
I, I personally, that's what I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, really.
It's all speculation at this point. We don't really know if there's going to be a demand for that land or the building.
Right.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get it out there.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, next, oh, no, we're still on old. Chase, any old business?
I have no old, thank you.
Mary, old? Jamie, old?
No old.
And I don't have any old. New? Jamie?
Uh, no, no new business.
Mary?
No.
Chase?
No, no, thank you.
And I don't have any. Correspondence, Chase?
Yep. June 17, 2021, CRO SWM, Southbridge Sanitary Landfills, Southbridge, Massachusetts, request to modify the schedule for the Comprehensive Site Assessment Sampling Program, documents from James A. McQuade, Section Chief, Solid Waste Management Program, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, to Jeff Bridges and the Board of Selectmen. June 18, 2021, KP Law E-Update, Extension of Pandemic-Related Relief Relative to Municipal Operations, E-Update from KP Law to Jeff Bridges. June 25, 2021, Notification to Abutters Under the Massachusetts Urban Redevelopment Corporations Notice Requirements, Notification from the Town of Holland to Jeff Bridges. June 29, 2021, FCP 287-26806-20208, Arnold Royal Letter to Jennifer Fisch, DCR Bureau of Forest Fire Control and Forestry from Rebecca Gendreau, Conservation Agent of the Town of Sturbridge. June 30, 2021, Massachusetts DEP Drinking Water Program for Fisk Hill Booster Pump Station, Letter from Robert Boswick, Section Chief of the Drinking Water Program to Jeff Bridges. July 1, 2021, The Dirt News from the Garden Newsletter from Josie, President of the Community Food Collaborative, to Jeff Bridges.
Okay, anybody else have any others? We got a letter from KP Law thanking us for reappointing them.
I also, I also, this, this came in right before town meeting, but there was a resident on Cedar Street who, they are concerned about any development going there, whether it's a senior center or an additional field. And I just encourage this resident to send a letter to everybody. Probably got it, because this goes before town meeting.
Yeah, we got it.
Several, I know. And I said, you know, we will have a public hearing to discuss whether, to discuss people's, you know, concerns and their support of putting a senior center at 70 Cedar Street. So I think everybody got it, but I told her I'd raise it at a meeting as well.
Yes, everybody does. And people, I hope people realize that there is a process that all these developments go through. I mean, the idea of, you know, the water running down and flooding the homes and stuff, I mean, that's all taken into account. Improvements to the road, widening the road, sidewalks, that all goes into the planning of the project and everything. And I certainly do, you know, agree that people have concerns and they ought to be looked at. Okay, next, we have...
I have one more...
Oh, Jeff?
Just one more item. This was a letter to Butch from DOT. He got a shared streets and spaces sidewalk for a sidewalk behind Burgess. So I think that's, that's good news every time we get free money from the state.
Right, that's $35,000.
Yeah, we should have congratulated him. Thank you for raising it.
Okay, next, approval of minutes of June 21. Is there a motion then to approve, it's written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, 41. Okay, next, Citizens Forum. We have Citizens Forum. Just nothing better to do, huh?
Good evening, is there anyone listening at home that would like to speak at the Citizens Forum?
It's nice having somebody that wants to listen. Somewhat unusual.
Oh, Jeff, before we adjourn, did you want to address the dock?
Oh, yes. I sent out some information to you late last week. The dock permit that was on your last agenda, as, as he was, as the gentleman was leaving, he politely updated his address, and when we cross-referenced that to another dock permit, we realized that where he wanted the dock was actually already approved for another dock. And we told him that, and he came back with some paperwork in a dispute between he and his neighbor over the use of that particular lot. And after we reviewed that document and sent it to John Eichmann of KP, John Eichmann's recommendation is to allow the applicant from the last meeting to have the dock and let the neighbors work it out legally. I talked to Ms. Ross today,